Before we begin, we want to let you know that we are offering American Sign Language interpreting and closed captioning for today's forum. To access the ASL interpretation, please find the videos for the ASL interpreters, which are listed as ASL interpreters, followed by their name. Once you find them, you can lock or pin their video to your screen so that you can see them throughout the presentation. To access closed captioning, on the bottom right corner of the screen, there's a multimedia box. Click on that box, you will then see the CC start option. You can select the language, font size, and color that best meets your needs. At this time, all members of the public joining the conversation are muted and will remain muted until the comment period at the end of the formal presentation. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted on the OPWDD website on the strategic My name is Jessica Pigeon. I am the Director of Strategic Planning for OPWDD within the newly established office for Strategic Initiative. Today's hearing will include a welcome from the Commissioner and a brief overview of the contents of the draft 507 strategic plan for 2023 to 2027. Following the formal presentation, time will be left for participants to provide comments for up to three minutes. Commissioner?
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our virtual public hearing on the draft 2023 to 2027 strategic plan. Many of you know I'm Carrie Neifeld, the Commissioner of OPWDD. After many months of meeting with stakeholders, the people we support, their family members, provider agencies, and advocates, and with some delays when we transitioned to a new administration and I joined OPWDD as the Commissioner, we released the draft plan in late May for your review. Today, we are eager to hear from all of you on your thoughts about the draft plan and the direction that we'll take as we move forward together to continue to build our service system into all we want and need it to be. We've already held 12 in-person public forums throughout the state, as well as two virtual public hearings. I have heard many thoughtful remarks and ideas from the people we support, their families, staff, providers, and the general public. And after each event, I feel more informed on the wants and needs of our system and the people who are a part of it. As you know, the strategic plan, or the 507 plan, as it is sometimes called, is a comprehensive plan for OPWDD, setting the direction for the agency for five years. In 2021, to prepare for drafting a new 507 plan, OPWDD gathered extensive input from a wide range of stakeholders through testimony at regional forums, meeting with stakeholder groups, and by email. We invited key comments on key areas within the service system. The draft plan is now on our website, along with a summary presented in plain language. To be sure we include everyone's voice in this planning process, these documents are available on our website in English, Chinese, and other languages. At this point, in establishing the final plan, it is important that we hear from you, our stakeholders, the parties most affected by and invested in OPWDD's supports and services. The strategic plan will represent our agreed-upon course of action for the next several years. Our staff worked to capture, within its goals and objectives, all the priorities and improvements and changes that our stakeholders told us were most needed in the OPWDD policies, programs, and operations. As we put together the draft plan you are hearing about today, we kept foremost in our minds the desire to improve our service system, the operations, the policies, the programs, and our ability to monitor and report on how people are experiencing our services. Each of those things is part of how well we actually help people live the lives that they want to. So the draft plan and the many activities and initiatives it describes, when taken on their own and all together, should lead to a more consistently positive experience with OPWDD supports and services for people with developmental disabilities. It is our desire for this plan that it will guide us in this very important direction. Once it is finalized, we can use the strategic plan to ensure we stay on course as we work together on making things happen that we all agree should. We'll take stock each year, examining our progress toward each goal and objective, and provide an update if needed. We'll bring forward ideas for new things that were not included but which have become important and necessary to the goal of improving our ability to support people with developmental disabilities in positive and effective ways. And in this way, together, we will continue to mobilize the strategic plan in the months and years ahead in partnership. We have set up several ways for people to let us know what they think about the goals and objectives outlined in the plan. In addition to the in-person public forums and virtual public hearings already held, we will be holding one more virtual public hearing tomorrow, August 16th, and we will be meeting with some key groups virtually in the days ahead. Throughout the summer, we will continue to receive feedback in written form through the online form that is available online. People can seek assistance with filling out the form and email comments to us on the draft plan. I encourage everyone to participate. You are our partners in building and sustaining the service system we want for our loved ones, friends, neighbors, and colleagues with developmental disabilities. We will read and consider all comments we receive as we prepare the final plan, which we'll make available to submit to the New York State Legislature by November 1. I will turn the program back over to Jessica, who will briefly outline the draft plan, and after which we will get your comments and thoughts. I'd also like to just take a quick second to thank our OPWDD staff for all the work that has gone into hosting these forums and drafting the plan. Thank you.
As mentioned, this presentation includes a brief overview of the contents of the draft strategic plan, also known as the 507 document, in reference to the section of the mental hygiene law related to strategic planning. The document includes strategic planning, the overview includes strategic planning input and data, strategic goals and objectives, the evaluation, conclusion, and appendices. It also includes our larger vision for how we plan to use our goals and objectives to inform our long-term planning and some immediate next steps. In addition to what we will share in this presentation, the full draft document includes specific activities and projects to help us meet our identified goals and objectives. As a reminder, the full draft strategic plan can be found on the strategic planning page of our website at opwdd.nyork.gov/strategic-planning. To prepare the 2023 to 2027 draft strategic plan, OPWDD invited input from its many stakeholders, including self-advocates, family members, organizations, providers, and others in the spring and summer of 2021. Input was provided through five regional public hearings, meetings, and targeted input from 33 stakeholder groups, including self-advocacy groups, family organizations, provider organizations, disability councils, and underrepresented communities. Additionally, we collected comments via email and through our existing stakeholder committees and meetings, for example, the Developmental Disability Advisory Council. We also analyzed Medicaid data, which is available on our website, staff stability data, and reviewed some national data and trends related to people with developmental Through all of the stakeholder engagement that we received and the data that we analyzed, the following key priorities were identified repeatedly. The first is to address the DSE workforce crisis. The second is to improve self-direction. The third is to improve housing supports and services. The fourth is to support people with complex needs better. The fifth was to improve OPWDD's use of data and our transparency with stakeholders. And the sixth is to support research of programs and services. In addition to that, some other categories that were highlighted include employment, children's services, health equity, and improving access to support for those who are from underserved Based on the stakeholder input and data, we drafted the following three goals for our 2023 to 2027 draft strategic plan. The first is to support people in the most person-centered ways. The second is to promote practices that strengthen the workforce and infrastructure. And the third is to advance systems change and innovation across the state. As noted, Goal 1 will focus on supporting people in the most person-centered and holistic ways possible. To do this, OPWDD will improve support and services for people with developmental disabilities throughout their lifespan, across all ages, by addressing gaps in services and ensuring support to focus on individual needs, offer choice, maximize independence, and increase community integration and participation. To help meet this goal, OPWDD will focus primarily on the following objectives. The first is to increase opportunities for community integration and participation, supports that facilitate self-determination, and activities that improve social determinance of health. The second is to ensure children, youth, and young adults receive appropriate and coordinated services within the context of school, family, and the community. And the third is to expand and improve services targeted for people with complex support needs, including residential and crisis services and behavioral support. And lastly, we want to continue to identify and address gaps in services and support that meet the needs of underserved culturally and ethnically diverse communities. Goal 2 focuses on advancing the OPWDD system by investing in the workforce, updating the system to better support service delivery, and increasing access to information. We'd like to improve our recruitment, retention, and the quality of the direct support and disability workforce. We'd like to advance technology in our information infrastructure and explore approaches to increase the availability and timeliness of data to support our decision-making, monitor performance, and assess the quality of services we're providing. And we'd like to continue to promote opportunities for stakeholders to inform our decision-making and long-term planning. Lastly, OPWDD is interested in exploring new approaches and opportunities that advance the system, reduce complexity, and improve responsiveness. To meet this goal, OPWDD plans to strengthen the quality, equity, and effectiveness of support, including the self-direction model, competitive integrated employment services, the continuum of housing and residential options we provide, and our care management services. We'd also like to increase opportunities to explore and implement regulatory and policy changes that support greater flexibility and incentivize improved personal outcomes. And we'd like to prioritize innovation by evaluating programs, conducting research, and developing opportunities to test new approaches to service delivery. The draft document also includes a brief evaluation section, a conclusion which speaks to our plan to share continuous updates on the status of the implementation of our strategic plan and the agency's overall progress on meeting our goals. Additionally, we have included various appendices which share more information on our services and more detailed overviews of the input that we received and that was shared by stakeholders The goals and objectives within the 2023 to 2027 draft strategic plan provide a roadmap for stabilizing the service system in the short term and lay out important research, evaluation, and innovation activities that will inform ongoing system improvement for the long term. We believe the plan will assist OPWDD alongside our stakeholders to work together to achieve clear and planned progress on waiver and systems reform that move us toward a more person-centered, sustainable, equitable, and coordinated system of support and services for New Yorkers with developmental disabilities. Some of the steps that we've taken thus far this summer related to the draft strategic plan and plan to take in the coming months include collecting information from stakeholders and feedback on this draft plan. We held public hearings and regional meetings, as the Commissioner noted, across the state. We've also received written feedback from stakeholders. In addition to that, we plan to update our draft based on all of that feedback and share it with our Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council for their review. Once we've done that, we'll plan on finalizing the document and sharing it with the legislature and governor, and then releasing it publicly in November. This concludes the formal presentation part of the hearing. At this point, I'll share information about how you can submit any of your comments that you're providing today in written form, and then we'll shift to oral comments. So written feedback can be submitted to OPWDD using our 507 feedback form, which will add to the comment box. Or you can submit an email directly to planning@opwdd.nyork.gov. We ask for you to include the draft strategic plan or 507 draft plan in your email subject line if you're planning to submit that way. We will now open the meeting for public comment. As a reminder, those interested in speaking were asked to register to speak in advance of today's hearing. To hear from as many people as possible, we ask those of you that we get a chance to call on to keep your comments to three minutes or less. We will share a timer on screen for speakers to help assist with a three-minute guidance. Please keep in mind that we do have a lot of people on the call, so while we will try to get to everyone who wishes to share comments, we may not be able to do so. And to allow as many people as possible to provide comments, we will not be answering any questions at this time. We will now begin our public comment period. We will call on speakers one by one, at which point you will be unmuted. At the end of the three-minute period, you'll be remuted, and we will call on the next speaker and unmute them. If there's an opportunity at the end for people who have not previously registered to speak, we will open it up for comment, and we'll call on you, we'll ask you to raise your hand, and call on you accordingly. We'll let you know if we have made it through all of those who have registered to speak. So at this time, we're going to shift to comments. First speaker, please.
Roberta Mueller. You can unmute.
Hi. This is Roberta Mueller from New York Forest for the Public Interest. We, along with my co-counsel at the NYCLU, we represent the Willbrook class, and we've submitted written comments already, so in the interest of time, I won't go over most of them. I will point out in a short way that while I agree with all of the goals you're proposing, what I see missing, and what we saw missing, is accountability. There are no, basically what we see here are plans to make plans, and no timeframe by which the public can hold you accountable with the governor for complying with these things. There are a lot of things that look like pilots that might be promising, but given that there are hundreds and hundreds of people who are considered emergency need replacement on the CRO at the moment, it's a little disturbing that there's nothing more kind of, you know, what we'll do this month, next month, in the next couple of years, that people can look at and say, okay, now they've done with this part, they'll move on to the next one. There's a lot of good wishes and a lot of buzzwords, but there's not a lot of specificity, and there's not a lot of accountability. And with that, I'll leave time to other people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Londonberg. You can unmute.
I don't have anything to say. The only question I have is, I just wondered about the COVID relief. I was wondering about that. How come we haven't seen any money from them?
Next speaker, please.
Dali Coletti. You can unmute.
Good afternoon. Like other parents of children with developmental disabilities, I was drafted. This was not what I had planned, and I would like to think that I turned into a first-round draft pick 29 years ago, as of Friday. My son has really forged the way, but rather than the reverse. So as I went along, I shared with what I knew with others. And one of those ways is that I founded two chapters of the Autism Society of America in New York State, one being in Binghamton in 1995 and the other being in Syracuse. I've been a broker in this program since 2004. My child, my son, was one of the first five children to have a plan in New York State over 18 years ago. And since that time, I have written over 400 plans in New York State in every DDRO. And I pride myself on the work that I do, not only for my son, but for others. I've served on family support service councils, the most integrated setting council is appointed by the governor, the Medicaid Reform Team, Human Rights Council, and the New York State Independent Living Council, finishing with seven years now in DISRIP, which is my day job, as they say. I plan to continue that service and also continue to be a mentor. So with that, I'm going to pass over quite a few of the comments that will probably be submitted by others. And really, the main issue that we've had is not a regulatory issue. I've spoken with Jason Helgerson, Donna Frescatori, Brett Friedman, and Danielle Hollahan, as this issue on all four Medicaid directors have agreed on this. And that is, when a person is hospitalized, it is a misconception by FIs and by OPWDD themselves that you cannot bill for COMHAB or RESPIT. And yes, you can. It is not a double billing issue. It has nothing to do with the New York State Nurses Act. It has everything to do with making sure that the individual who is hospitalized is given a shorter length of stay. Their stays tend to be twice as long. They tend to go through three times as many testing because we don't know because of communication. We need to be able to not just have family with them. They need to have their staff with them. And this, once and for all, according to Donna, Jason, and the whole group, and Danielle, somebody at OPWDD needs to fix that and get rid of that because it's really, really interfering with the quality of some of their lives. The families, some of them, I've known personally, they've lost their jobs over having to sit in the hospital for days and days and days at a time. It's not duplicate billing. Secondly, I just have to say, for 18 years with the self-direction services and having been there and done that with it, this is my son's key to success. He owns his own home, fully, outright, one of the first to do this in New York State. He has a job with a job coach, again, through self-direction. And if it weren't for self-direction, the way it is now with independent brokers who are certified, he would not be as successful as it is. So let's keep it going. I think you have a great strategic plan, and I'm really happy that you invited me to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marie Zamor.
Hi, yes, I'm Marie Zamor. I'm here. Some of the questions, staff that wanted to know, in Hudson Valley DDSO population, wanted to know about why we were being, no, not why we were being, let me rephrase that. We are all DSPs, essential workers, and selective people from statewide agencies were given the COVID money, and some of the DSPs in OPWDD were not. So that was one of the questions.
We're not answering questions at this time because we have a number of speakers, but if you have more comments that you'd like to share, please feel free to do so.
Okay.
Would you like to share more, or are you set?
No, I'm set.
Okay, great, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rebecca Jamson. You can now unmute.
Hi, hi, everyone. How you guys doing today?
Great.
I honestly, I kind of heard a part of it because I was driving, but I am a DSP and I work for an agency called Free. And it goes back to, I forgot who it sent, someone mentioned about hospitals. I feel like it's not fair because when I went in there for like a while back, I was told by the hospital that no one is allowed to be in the back. And I said, that's not true because I have proved that because I have a disability, you know, that I have a letter showing. And it's just, I feel like with a lot of people with disability, don't get treated with respect. And I've been a DSP for, this December, in my field, will be my like 12-year anniversary, and I just feel like they don't get treated normal, and they should be because where they have a disability or not, you know, they should be treated equally with same and respect, you know? And it breaks my heart to see how they get treated because I treat them as if they're normal and they don't get treated right. And it breaks my heart as a DSP to see their face and their expression and everything else. I just want them to be happy. I want them just to be treated as if they're normal, there was nothing wrong because that's what I truly believe in. And I feel like, as I said, going back to hospitals and stuff, like they should have someone who needs support to have because like, what if they're nervous or they're not able to advocate for themselves? And that was my situation, and I was really offended that I was told my support staff wasn't allowed to say she had to leave, which was not right. Otherwise, I have nothing further and more to say.
Next speaker?
We have Christine Welcome. You can go ahead and unmute.
I'm an individual with a disability, and like Rebecca said, I feel like people with disabilities aren't being treated fairly. And, you know, we should be treated fair like we're people, not like we're aliens or, you know, non-people. And I feel like certain people in agencies get treated like they have favorites, and everybody should be treated equally.
Next speaker?
Next, we have Janet Dummer. You can unmute.
Hello, thank you. I had submitted my input already, and back in June of last year, I had submitted a narrative input and also nine recommendations. And I appreciate that the draft plan includes the OPWD vision statement in the introduction, and most of the goals and objectives are good. But with the exception, most of my recommendations from last year, unfortunately, I don't feel were sufficiently addressed, and I'll focus on one or two. The Housing Supports and Residential Services section in particular needs major revision. Instead of discussing actions in a narrative format, the draft should outline the specific measurable actions it proposes to meet each objective. There is no more important decision that a parent makes for a child with intellectual developmental disabilities, and there is no more important service that OPWD is required to provide than housing, as parents will likely die before their children. In order for housing placement to be successful, there should be a transition period prior to when the individual is no longer able to live with their parents because of the parent's aging disability and ultimate mortality. Therefore, parents of individuals with ADD begin planning for their children's housing early in their lives. The draft plan should list a continuum of residential services that are essential to meet the diverse population OPWD serves. OPWD should not be favoring non-certified over certified, as non-certified housing will not ensure the health, safety, and well-being of many individuals, like my son, who will be 30 this year, who has autism-related behavior challenges, intellectual disabilities... intellectual disability, and a seizure disorder. Individuals like my son require twenty-four-seven care and staff that are certified to administer medication. Moreover, each service on the continuum must be person-centered, pursuant to person-centered regulation. Currently, certified home placement, for the most part, is not person-centered with respect to timing or placement. The Certified Residential Opportunities List that requires individuals to remain in their aging parents' home until emergency arises is, um, the least person-centered approach imaginable. The plan should specify how OPWD intends to provide timely person-centered housing with a clear access path. And I'm just going to skip to another part. I'm, I'm concerned about all the money that's being expended for studies, um, when I, I think the funding should be used for services. But I just wanted to emphasize access as my, um, we need to have a clear path to seamless access to services. I had to advocate for an after-school vacation program for school-aged children. Um, I had to advocate for a day have without walls program when my son became twenty-one, and I had a five-year advocacy for a person-centered, um, certified home for my son and, um, five individuals. I'm very grateful for all the services we receive, and I'm very grateful for Commissioner Nyfeld and, um, her responsiveness and vision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Eleanor Clayhill. You can unmute.
I worked, um, for the last twenty-six years in this field, the last twenty at A H R C Nassau. This is my first time joining the open forum. I'm a residential manager, and I just felt the need to be more involved as we see many changes, um, happening. And one of the questions, I have a few, but I'll just stick to one today, um, is wanting to understand exactly how the DSPs are paid, the direct support professionals. When we look at the pay wages, and they just went up to fifteen dollars an hour, and we look at the caseload that the DSP workers have, this is part of the crisis why we can't have such an overturn now in this field. Um, it's, it's just alarming, because we are so short-staffed, no one wants to come in for the amount of monies that is being offered. The question that I had to my upper administration was why is it that they have salaries that matches today's living cost of living here in New York City, opposed to the DSP workers, assistant managers, managers, and ADs? Um, again, I'm actually, you know, trying to get more involved so that, you know, we can start advocating for more pay. I wanted to know, um, who actually helps determine the upper administration salaries? You know, we're able to look at these salaries and see just huge gaps in payment. And, um, we just don't understand why is that allowed? But yet, we're told that OPWDD sets the salary wages for the agencies. So it's a standard rate for DSP, assistant managers, managers, and so forth and so on. Again, I repeat, upper administration has huge inflated salaries, um, that, you know, accommodate today's, um, living, cost of living. So that was my question, and I'm, you know, I'll just wait patiently for some answers. But again, I just wanted, um, OPWDD to at least, um, look into those salaries, see whether or not if they can be tweaked, see how the DSP rate, um, can go up. Because again, there are so many incidents that are happening, it's such short-staffed, it's such a major crisis right now. And we interview, and the only thing you're constantly hearing now is that the money that's being, um, offered with the DSP title and the workload is just not enough. And again, we have many, many vacancies, and that is alarming, and it's a huge concern right now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Armand. You can now unmute.
Listening, thank you.
We can hear you. Lisa, did you want to speak?
Next, we'll talk to Michelle Corrano. You can now unmute.
Michelle?
Next, we have Ding Yang. You can now unmute. Next, we have Don Danelli. You can now unmute, Don.
Uh, Regis, speak. I have nothing, I have nothing to add. I'm just learning a lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Goldberg. Jackie, you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name's Jackie Goldberg, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and listen today. I am coming from multiple perspectives as the co-chair of the Manhattan Family Support Services Advisory Council, as well as the mother of a twenty-two-year-old son with profound autism who uses self-direction. Um, and what I see is that the system is not working well for anyone. I have spent the past two years trying to make sure my son did not fall off the proverbial cliff when he aged at his school. He has autism, a seizure disorder, Tourette's, and severe OCD, and requires a high level of support throughout the day. A level of support that traditional day have simply cannot and do not offer. Our only safe option is self-direction. But how is it possible that a budget for community classes is the same for a school-aged child who gets picked up, as my son did, at seven-thirty a.m. and dropped off at four p.m., as for my now-adult son, who relies on these classes for all his basic skill acquisition, socialization, behavioral support, and basically the structure of his entire day? I'm asking that the IDGS cap must be examined and adjusted accordingly. I also wanted to comment on the new family reimbursement ADM, allowing a family reimbursement for one emergency or crisis in a lifetime. I don't even think I have to say out loud how ridiculous that is, and that really needs to be changed. You're putting parents in a position of saying, well, is today's crisis the worst it's going to be? Might it be a worse crisis next week? And not wanting to use their chip because fearing it might get only worse going forward. Lastly, I wanted to talk about the issue that keeps me and many of my peers up at night. And that is, how can I ask my adult daughter to take over responsibility for my son when her father and I can no longer do it within a system that is not designed adequately and safely for his support needs? No one should have to go to sleep wishing to win the lottery as a strategy for securing their child's future basic needs. And my daughter should not have to live with the worries and anxiety over the future that haunt my days and nights. It needs to be addressed, the transition from aging parents using self-direction, and how OPWDD is going to work with siblings and other people who take over guardianship to ensure the safety and well-being of these people who require the added support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Laura Corrano. You can now unmute. Catherine Williams. You can now unmute. Tiffany Parkless. You can now unmute. Betty Oliver. You can now unmute. Amy Rothoff. You can now unmute.
As a mother, um, a caregiver, and, um, one of the things I wanted to, um, I, I wanted to repeat what Roberta Mueller said earlier about the plans to make plans. Um, it, we keep hearing about, um, how you are going to, like, you know, that you will be doing things, you are going to do things. It sounds like there's a lot of hopes to's, but not a lot of concrete going to's or specific start dates, and, um, it, it just sounds, in, in the research, um, and the studies, and, um, just that one flow chart where it looked like a whole lot of, um, red tape before any action was actually done. Um, and I just can't believe that we can't do this in a more efficient way with more of the money going to the actual children, um, adults, and, you know, caregivers who need these funds. Um, one thing I wanted to point out was, you said that tomorrow is the last, um, forum. But yet, Family Support Services has not even been, it, it was left out of this plan. The committee just, I mean, met not too long, a couple days ago, and they're not even, they're barely even a committee. So how can we move forward with a plan that doesn't even include the whole plan? And with the self-direction funding, I would also like to make a comment about FSS. And I just don't understand why is it so hard to access the FSS? In order for me to use some of my SSS funds, I had to have money moved. Then I had to, then I have to, uh, submit it to an agency and hope that they'll reimburse me, even though the money is in our self-direction budget. Like, that to me just makes absolutely no sense. And I just, um, I really hope to see more concrete plans, and definitely some more about FSS. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we went through everybody who was pre-registered to speak, um, we believe. So we'll be opening it up to anybody else who's interested in speaking. We ask you to raise your WebEx hand. If we called on you previously and you weren't able to unmute at that time, please feel free to raise your hand, and we'll try to get back to you again. Um, when we unmute you, you will receive a notice that says that we're requesting to unmute you. So please keep that in mind and be on the lookout for that, so that as you unmute yourself and we unmute you, uh, we can hear you. So again, we'll give it a moment. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand on WebEx, and we'll, um, go through additional speakers.
Laura? Laura Corrano, you can unmute.
My comment is in regards to, um, trying to, um, register someone for, uh, into the Choices website. I will have, I have entered people in, I, I supervise a program without walls. I have entered people in to the Choices website, and then a month later, it gets kicked out. Um, any explanation that I have received has been very vague. Uh, I would like to, uh, find out who I can speak to, an actual live person, um, because I have made phone calls, I've done all of my due diligence, emails, phone calls, and I'm still not getting the information I need. Any and all help you can give me will be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sarah Buckinger.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, hi, my name is, um, Sarah Buckinger, and I'm a support broker for self-direction. I would just like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk and put my feedback in for this new plan. I would like to talk about, um, a few things. The first thing is about the self-direction process, which is a very long one and exhausting one. I was trying to, um, think of different ideas of how we could expedite it. So with the startup budgets and the cost-neutral budget amendments, it's a pity, because this, this process takes about three months for no good reason. It's, it's a, it's a basic document that just needs to be signed, and why can't it just be, um, approved by the fiscal intermediary and then sent into the OPWDD D D R O just for their files, but in the meantime, it should be approved already? So this is with the process. Self-direction is a very, very long one, and it's very exhausting. And it's, if we could try to expedite it in any different way, then it would be very beneficial for these individuals that I serve. Additionally, with a self-direction budget, it's, it's a very, um, limited and, um, full of regulations, which, which makes the individuals very disappointed and frustrated. They get so excited with the budget and what they will have and be able to use. And in the meantime, when the budget finally, finally gets approved after about a year's time, they get disappointed with all the paperwork that they have to do, and some of the services that they wanted to utilize are very hard to get approved by the fiscal intermediary because of the many regulations that are attached to each service. So when you make the new plan, if the commissioner and anyone that's working on the plan, if you could keep in mind to be more flexible, that these services should be more attainable, they should be able to really use money for what they really need, and, and it shouldn't be just for some basic services that are, um, we could, you could make a lot of regulations with. We want it to be more flexible and more open, open-ended, so that they should be able to use it more freely. Additionally, I want to talk about, um, the work, workforce for these individuals. I have a sister with cerebral palsy. She is thirty-three years old, and she is in a wheelchair, and she likes to go out in the community at work. However, she has been home since, literally since COVID, because she doesn't have a, a job, and no one wants to take her as an employee, because everyone understands that a, uh, individual that's wheelchair-bound and has cerebral palsy has some disabilities, and their work might not be as efficient as other people's. However, if we could try to somehow, um, get these employers to want to hire such individuals, either by giving them some kind of credit, a tax credit for the pay that they pay these individuals, or if we can give them bonus or if we can give them bonuses for whoever has an employee that is OPWDD-approved, that would be a major, major, major accomplishment. Additionally, with the staff members, it's the hardest part is to find staff members nowadays. With all, with the minimum wage and the hard time finding people, it's very hard. So I would appreciate if you could try to help out with these different topics that I covered. Thank you so much for giving me the time to talk.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Luanne Haley, you can now unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Can.
Good. You know, I have heard about the strategic plan, and I heard your review, saw the flow chart. I'm a little stunned by some of this. You know, you say the priority is, of course, the shortage of workers. I would have assumed you would have put a bulk of the money over the next five years towards hiring, retaining, and maintaining workers across the board. That should be, you know, number one. Until we fix that problem, I really don't see how these studies are going to help anybody do anything. All this research and data, of course, is important and provides you with more information, which is a good thing. But until we have workers, we're not going to be able to act on any of that information you're uncovering and discovering. So I think that the priorities need to be readjusted for what is reality at the moment. COVID happened, and we have to address that. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that Crow List is a nightmare. A couple of people on this call have mentioned that it is very hard to access housing at this point in time. And I know that has not just happened, that has been an ongoing problem that is only getting worse. I went through the system. My daughter is 28 years old. She was an emergency candidate on that Crow List, so I speak from experience. We need more access to housing. Self-direction, I know, is a big priority for OPWDD, and in theory, most of the money goes towards that. Self-direction is not for everyone. If we're talking people-centered, then there has to be more than one option. Self-direction cannot be the only option. And I've heard the director of OPWD speak on how self-direction is the focus. You know, I felt like saying to her, that's not a bad thing, but there needs to be more than one focus. People that are severely disabled really can't access self-direction and need appropriate and well-funded housing, so that they don't end up in hospitals and they don't end up in trouble, and they don't end up with no place to stay when their parents die. And self-direction is not an option. I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Quacken, you can now unmute.
At the public forum, a public forum and submitted written comments, so I'm not going to speak about the 507 plan. But I just, I had a thought listening to people's questions, and I've attended several of these remote sessions. And especially family members and participants, and people who use services, are asking some very specific sort of individualized questions, but a lot of them really have resonance for a lot of people. And I just thought that you might consider, you know, coming out, you know, when you're looking at the data from all of these sessions, to put out maybe some, you know, sort of an FAQ with some of these questions and the answers to those questions. Because I think it's, you know, when someone asks a question, it's the tip of the iceberg for, you know, perhaps tens to hundreds of other people having the same questions. So I just wanted to put that in as a thought. It will also help people be, you know, more heard. This is sort of a difficult, I think, format for some people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Karen Nagy, you can now unmute.
Karen? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just want to begin by saying that, you know, I really appreciate the fact that the plan's first goal is person-centered. Services, that's always been a goal of OPWDD, but it just seems like we're making progress in the area of actually providing person-centered services. With regard to that, one of the concerns that I have is the studying of things like care coordination and looking at the CAS in terms of measuring acuity. And there are some issues with the CAS that concern me. I have a profoundly disabled son with autism who's 32. The three-day look-back period really doesn't give a sense of him as a being and the language and self-regulatory and adaptive skills sections aren't really well enough to give you a good idea of what his real need is. And the care coordination system, I know we're looking at evaluating that, but I've had three or four care coordinators in the last two years, so it's been really difficult to establish whether or not that's been effective for us. I think the biggest thing is, in terms of the strategic plan, is looking at that goal for increasing transparency in data to assure that the system is able to really be flexible and plan proactively for who's coming in. And it would seem like the strategic plan would be a good opportunity to put those benchmarks in place and measure that data, so that we can tell whether we're actually, you know, giving ourselves the baseline for what we need to determine in terms of progress and effectiveness of the goals of the strategic plan. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I too have a little concern about some of the funding of the studies and research and putting more money into direct services.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patrick Tanino, you can now unmute.
Hey, I am a service provider, but I'm also a parent. And my concerns today are, a lot of families and people are interested in maintaining a lot of the public health emergency flexibilities, that they really enjoyed them. They would like them to stick around. So flexibilities with proven plans and things like that, so they would like that. Also, some of the face meeting requirements, such as quarterly, or in the case of Tier Four, monthlies. So some parents have elected to not want that, and doing that or saying that it's a requirement would delegitimizes some of that parent or member choice in that. Also, some parents have come to me and experienced, there's a lot of paperwork and bottlenecks. So any way to make the process less convoluted and reduce paperwork and remove the bottlenecks, because having to go through three or four different access points can get very troublesome for all members of that, of that chain, both the parents and members and the service providers as well. So that's, those are my main points. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Roberta Grogan, you can now unmute.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, great. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. It is a momentous task that you are undertaking, albeit by mandate. Your priorities, the key priorities are lovely and aspirational even, but they're almost too vaguely lofty. So I would suggest that, you know, in terms that we parents, especially of individuals that have just gone into self-direction over the past two years, one of which was within COVID, break them down to benchmarks, set long-term goals, and timelines with evaluation periods within your own priority system would be fantastic. I think you really need to take a deep dive into delivery systems. And as prior speakers have indicated, there is a tremendous amount of paperwork. There's a lack of standardization, there's a lack with the FIs, there's a lack of oversight with regard to approvals of program. And you can go from one FI to another. Certain programs are approved, certain programs are not. It doesn't make sense. There's no standardization there. So in terms of the delivery of systems, I think that a deep dive into the care delivery and coordination of that is really important. Is care coordination working when it takes two years to get somebody approved for OPWDD service? And then, once they are approved, the paperwork is bogging families down. You know, speaker after speaker speaks of the worries of a parent in handing down this voluminous work to our children who may be assisting in the caretaking for their siblings going forward. That is really the brunt of what I had to say today. I wonder, though, the care coordination is eating up a lot of the funding. So could we look at how to make that work more effectively and efficiently going forward? Thank you very much, and to all my other parents out there, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carrie Noyes, you can now unmute.
Couple, I guess, points that I wanted to talk about. I am both a parent and I am a provider in the system. And the first has to, goes towards family support services, not initially being part of the plan. That is, a lot of times, the first access a family has to services and to not look at how we can better serve families, you know, while they're waiting for waiver or anything like that. I think would be a shame not to really look at that in this plan. The second thing is regarding family reimbursement, the new ADMs that came out. It says in there, if you are a paid caregiver, you can no longer request family reimbursement funds. So if your child lives with you and you're a single parent like I am, that discriminates against my ability to use family support services or family reimbursement, because they're saying under CD, if you're being paid for CD PAP, then you can't access family reimbursement. Where if you're a paid caregiver, you do need that break and you need respite, and you have other things that you may want to submit for. That's one thing. The other thing is, my son graduated during COVID. He has been home for two years. We don't have self-direction, because honestly, I just am not, I don't want to go through all the paperwork right now. But, you know, you apply for comm half-hours, and he's home, he's not in school, and we were initially given 12 hours a week. And there's no rhyme or reason. We sent a justification back in to request more, and I got 20 hours a week. It just doesn't seem like the money is going to the individuals that need, you know, the help, because I want him now to get out into the community. The other thing is, again, going back to FRP, is the process now with the new ADMs is, hold your committee meetings, send it to the DRO. The DRO has to send probably most of the requests, because they're not in the new ADMs, to Central Office, who has now put together an internal review team to make basically the final decision if a family can be reimbursed for an item or not. And to me, that is just, I think, I feel, a waste of everybody's time when, you know, you have provider agencies providing this family reimbursement program, and now we have to, it lengthens the turnaround time to get money out to families. It, you know, is a lot more work for the DROs. Central Office now has a team that will be reviewing these applications. And I just think that it's made it way more complicated, as well as requesting everybody's life plan. That's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pat Merk, you may now unmute.
For the opportunity to speak, I am the parent of a 40-year-old, almost 40-year-old young man, he's not young, I can't say that anymore, with autism. And I've been advocating for a long time, and I feel like we keep saying the same things over and over and over again. And it feels almost as if every time there's a new commissioner, there's a new person, governor, that we start all over again. And I'd like to see in this plan that we are building knowledge that can then be applied to further goals, no matter who comes in. I agreed with Roberta that we have plans to make plans, but there aren't any specifics going forward. I was excited as a member of the, one of the CCO's IFAB boards, to hear that the CCOs are now going to be partnering with OPW to gather data. But you need to gather more than just numbers. Numbers only tell you so much. And in the era when anybody, even a very non-technical person like myself, can set up a Survey Monkey, it seems like you should be able to know more about what people need and not have to spend lots of money doing surveys. It's great to ask the CCOs to tell you how long people are waiting to get eligibility for programs. But that doesn't mean that people are being served once they get eligibility, because we all know that there are people who have eligibility and are waiting and waiting and waiting for services. You need to know why. Are there not programs that meet that individual's needs? Is there not programs, period? That's what drives the money to where it's needed most. And that's really what you need to do. You need to gather data. You know, 10 years ago, families were saying there were not enough residential opportunities, and OPWDD was saying they did not know how many people were actually on the residential waiting list. And that was terrible, and that drove the legislature to require you to find out. And that's what you need to do now. You need to make sure that you gather good data that can be used going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Lisa Armband, you can now unmute.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hi, I just, my name is Lisa Armband. I'm from the provider end. And I wanted to reiterate what Sarah had said earlier in the conversation. in the conversation about access to self-direction and the question about that. We offer several community classes, enrichment class and swimming classes to the community. And there's a lot of confusion about payment for those programs through self-direction. The care managers aren't clear about it. I've spoken to various people. But here, and I've been pushing families to go to self-direction because I felt that that was an easier way for them to be able to access services in the community. But it really is very unclear to what the criteria for that is. I also wanted to say, I don't know if this is the place to say it, but I have called the Queens Regional Office several times for questions for different things. And it doesn't seem like anybody lives there anymore. And when you finally do get a connection, you get that the mailbox is full. So I really want to put that out there that the regional offices are supposed to be our support when we have questions. And since COVID, I have not been able to speak to a person. I've even gone to the main OPW number to complain about it. So if anything could be done about that, that would be really, really great. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else is interested in speaking at this time, we do have time. Please raise your hand, your little WebEx virtual hand if you're interested in speaking. I'll give it a moment. Just a reminder, if you do raise your hand and you're interested in speaking, we will send a request to unmute you and then you'll unmute yourself. All right. At this time, oh, we have one more. Hold on one second. So we do have one call-in user. So we're, we won't be able to call your name specifically, but if you're calling in via phone and you're interested, we'll unmute you now if you raise your hand. Your phone number begins with area code 518-378. I believe you have to hit star six, I think it is, to unmute yourself.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Dave. I have a son who's 38 years old. He lives in a residential facility in the house, you know, through the Center for Disabilities, IRA. So I agree, my comments are, there need to be more specifics in the plan. It has to be measurable with benchmarks so we can find out what's going wrong and what's going right and how to improve on those things. Additionally, the money for, that's being spent on research and studies, that's all good, but now's not the time to spend money on stuff like that. We, there's a crisis going on with staffing. So when you have a crisis, everything should be focused and pointed at that to try to put that fire out. So that, all that money that OPWDD is spending and putting out for all those studies and things, they need to, like, change that and try to put out the fires that they got going on in the house so the house doesn't burn down. Yeah, it all has to do with staffing. 90% of the problems that we're experiencing right now all has to do with staffing. Also, in the plan, there is no actionable items for the immediate future. Like others have said, the plan is, it sounds very nice and there's a lot of the words that typically are used in ISPs and life plans and so on. It's centered around the person. That's been for years, that's nothing new. It sounds good and it is good. We need to actually take actions on doing that. And what are the specific plans that OPWDD wants to use to get there, to show those things? None of that stuff is in the plan. The plan is very, very vague. And in my opinion, it just needs to be much more specific on how they're going to accomplish some of these things and show the benchmarks and to be able to show service providers as well as parents and caregivers and guardians what, what they took, what actions they took to try to fix something. And then we'll be able to look back and they'll be able to show what didn't work and what did work so we can move forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And thank you, Commissioner Nentil.
Thank you. Next speaker. Valerie DeClara. You can now unmute.
Get in there to say I wanted to speak. I'm a parent, I'm also a support broker since 2011. So I've watched self-direction swing the full pendulum from those few people who had the ability to access it and tap into it when there was money available to when the pendulum swung and then they wanted everybody to self-direct, whether they understood the service delivery system or not. And the hope is this, that parents become more knowledgeable through trainings that used to be provided that we don't see happening as much as they used to. An informed parent is a very powerful thing. And then people have choice. Because what worries me is when we hear different family members try to advocate for their own individual's needs and at the same time, not understanding the importance that another individual might need something different. So all services have a place and a purpose. But when we are utilizing so many funds, and there are not endless funds, so we have to understand why certain things are limited. But when there are funds being misspent or poorly spent, in my opinion, for an individual like my son, when we're paying the top amount of money for care management, and I realize that, and then what I can say is, I'd rather use basic because I don't need the support. I don't need that money spent monthly for somebody to call me just to say hi because his needs at this current time are met. The day that I do need more services, I would like to raise up to a higher level, but leave that money available to somebody else. There's very little information provided to parents to let them make good choices to help the state spend their money well. So back to parent education is important. At the same time, provider education is important. Care manages right now, I have to say, it is a disturbing system to watch. The intent of that person who is the face to the parent and the umbrella of all the services to be the least knowledgeable person right now in any team that I work on is concerning. And why that is? I can only guess that it's the support of the CCOs and the way that they are interpreting their instructions and the intent that they are moving in the direction is not person-centered. It's not people-first. It's paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. And I understand that that's a lot of interpretation. Part of that is, are we jumping through paths? Are we jumping through IMs? Are we jumping through CAS, DDP2s? All of this is paperwork that we, as providers, get to shove around our desks and get paid while just moving from, you know, systemic plan to systemic plan and really, truly not anything going back to the individual participant. So I know this sounds a little complaining, but the truth is this, all of our services are valuable and important. But how they get managed and how tightened up we choose to make them by knowing what we should be spending our money on. So that, more importantly, in my opinion, we have people, right, that are going to be aging out of school. And do we need $50,000? Sorry to those people who have school-aged children who now have access to $50,000 to self-direction. But there is a point that, in my opinion, you do not need $50,000 for services unless it's an extreme situation for a school-aged student. That should not be. But as you get older and you start to transition out, maybe 16-year-old transition, you want to start to build your community and your services, yes, that is a time that would be helpful to increase that budget. Moreover, do we need access to the full amount of budgets available? Or should we keep some of the budgets in reserve for when we start to move out into our home? Because people who start to think that they can spend a hundred and something thousand dollars on all different types of services, remember, this is not, it's not just a ticket of partying. It's services and supports to ensure, you know, safety and community participation. So when people move out into their apartments and they need a little bit more support, maybe that's when a little bit more of that budget should open. Housing stipends are unreasonable. So with that said, my hope is that the strategic plan gets strategic and we actually don't just shuffle and shift each time that new administration is in. And parents should unite together to support all parents, all individuals, to make sure that people are, have access to what they need, not, and by understanding and educating ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, everybody who has requested to speak has had an opportunity to do so. We have a few more people who are raising their hand, one moment. Bob Polycastro. You can now unmute.
Bob?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, great, thank you. I started as a parent 33 years ago with a medically fragile daughter. And I've been advocating and ended up creating an agency ourselves, being as an advocate with those children. Things for medically frail seem to be left out of systems. And we've gone back tremendously. Since the health department took over the Care at Home program, a lot of the parents threw the front door, their children not being forwarded to the children's health home, which is a tragedy for those families, not getting the supports they need. And for those that happen to be within the health home, I would, it would really be great for them if there was an easier way for them to transfer to the CCO waivers, OPW waivers, the, to potentially try to get self-direction as one of the only options for them. But self-direction does fall short for a lot of the medically frail young adults. The difficulty for the parents is lack of nursing support and like everybody else in the system, home care support. The residential, it's become more difficult for children to be approved to move into a group home when a parent can no longer do it. The efforts and lack of support, same way we see in home care, have also impacted residential opportunities for both children and young adults. And there is a desperation and need to have a rates to continue to support them in an OPWDD environment. The young adults, I've been 15 years and we've been calling it a crisis and those parents that can no longer do it, in most cases, there's not an opportunity for them. And unfortunately, they're trying to hold on. With kids and young adults end up going into nursing homes and parents continuing to struggle within the system. So there are, it's a smaller population within the wide array of individuals. But it's in desperate need to be considered in this, in this plan as we look forward and go into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Trudy. You can now unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I'm a parent and I was wondering about aging in place, if there were any provisions addressed and parameters for agencies to apply for increased services in residence such as supported apartments for residents that needs have increased due to aging. And also, when I applied for COMHAB for my daughter, there were no people to provide that service. So those are some of the problems I'd like addressed, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Chaya Pollak. You can now unmute.
What, I would like to, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
What I would like to bring to your attention, the issue with self-hired staff. So if there are offenses, they do not fall under the purview of the Justice Center. And it is left to agency investigators to investigate. But what happens thereafter is, even if things are, you know, proven to be, the allegations are real, what ends up happening is nothing. The staff do not go on the SEL and there's nothing being done to protect our participants. We, there needs to be something in place. A change needs to be made to the law so that our people can be protected. It can't be that a staff gets fired for horrible things with one agency and then can just go and get a job with any other agency and there's no, there's no flags that get up, that go up. So that would be something that I think would really, really, really does need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Lily Bell Saramchan. You can now unmute.
Hi, everybody, this is Lily. I'm a newly parent in the, you know, going in for OPWDD services. I'm also in the care management, in the care management role. And I've been having quite a difficulty just getting waiver services. It has been, through OPWDD, it has been denied or not even processed through the QRT as I have to browse other options first. For example, through FSS, trying to hire my own, you know, someone of my own. And the thing with this list that they have provided me is the rate of pay, which has to come out of pocket, it ranges around 20, 25, sometimes 30. And then that is something I cannot pay out of pocket to then sit and wait for reimbursement. It has been months and months of me trying to get even waiver services for my child. And I feel like that is something that needs to be definitely brought up in how we're, you know, the system is delegating for, for parents to do this on their own when we have eight to four, nine to five jobs and dealing with your others, you know, everything else in your life with your family. And this has been really very stressful. So I just wanted to share that, those kinds of... So I just wanted to share that, those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Briggs Seekins. You can now unmute.
My name's Briggs Seekins. I am a director of a provider agency, a vocational agency. I think a lot of important points have been made, of course, today, and there's ones I've heard in similar forums. I do, uh, I feel like every forum here needs to mention rate reimbursement rates. I mean, that's critical. I, I enjoyed reading the strategic plan. I felt like, uh, you know, I felt proud to be associated with an agency that has these lofty ideas for serving of my fellow citizens in the state that, you know, need our support so that they can become really valuable, integrated and valued, integrated members of society. And I appreciate the idea of things like a more professionalization in the DSP. I think more training is a great idea across the board. I think having a, a code, like a, an OT, an occupational code for us is great. The, but the, the fundamental thing is, is that those things don't really matter at all, though, if there isn't a higher rate paid to agencies to, uh, be able to pay our staff more. I mean, there's, there's a very serious limit. I don't know what some agencies do. I know I really feel like I squeeze our rates as much as I can because I have to have staff in here and I, you know, it's harder than it's ever been to get staff. And I'm doing vocational supports, which have a little bit better reimbursement rate. One thing I would say about the professionalization and the extra training, that's got to be done in a way, though, that agencies can get some, you know, aren't just having to be required to pay staff to go take training and not be able to bill for it. The model that was, you know, arrived at for vocational, for supported employment, the innovations training, that's a really fair model to agencies. It allows us to professionalize our staff and get them great quality training. If you don't have that for residential, they have things like that, it's going to be very tough on agencies, um, to, to get that training for their staff. Uh, I mean, I really decided to speak because of the one COMHAB. COMHAB, I, I don't even try to provide COMHAB right now because it's impossible on my rate. On my rate, it's about forty-one dollars an hour. I would have to pay mileage usually if I was providing that. And, you know, I'm not going to be able to pay anything close to what's a competitive salary for any kind of entry-level position for that right now. And then if I gotta pay mileage on top of that, that's just impossible. Not to mention if you're paying somebody fifteen dollars an hour, you know, they're not likely to have a dependable vehicle. So rates have to be raised.
Thank you. At this time, I'll pass it, um, back to Commissioner Michael.
Thank you, everyone, so much for taking the time to participate. There were, um, many participants and lots of really insightful comments, which I really appreciate hearing. I always am so impressed by people who take, how many people take time out of their days to join these forums to provide feedback on the future of our system. So thank you again for taking the time, um, for your thoughtful comments and your thoughtful feedback. You know, we will be, as we talked about in the opening remarks, finalizing the strategic plan in the fall. We're shooting for early November to have a, a final version submitted to the legislature and to the governor. And I expect that many of the comments we receive today and throughout our summer sessions will be reflected in that final plan. So again, thank you for taking the time. Thank you for your commitment, um, to individuals with ADD and to the system that supports and serves them. Have a great afternoon.